And let us thank, well, thank you Susan Miyamoto for bringing us a wonderful piano player for this evening, and I do not have, I don't have your name.
Joseph.
Joseph?
Yeah.
And thank you very much, so we'll just give Joseph a hand. All right, so we are calling this meeting the Temecula City Council to order, and this evening for our invocation, we have Carolyn Lewis of Bahai, of Temecula. So come on down for the invocation, please, and Councilmember Nigar, would you please honor us with the flag salute when she is finished?
My pleasure.
Oh, thou merciful God, oh thou who art mighty and powerful, oh thou most kind Father, these servants have gathered together, turning to thee, supplicating thy threshold, desiring thine endless bounties from thy great assurance. They have no purpose save thy good pleasure; they have no intention save service to the world of humanity. O God, make this assemblage radiant, make the hearts merciful, confer the bounties of the Holy Spirit, endow them with the power from heaven, bless them with heavenly minds, increase their sincerity, so that with all humility and contrition, they may turn to thy kingdom and be occupied with service to the world of humanity. May each one become a radiant candle, may each one become a brilliant star, may each one become beautiful in color. O kind Father, confer thy blessings, consider not our shortcomings, shelter us under thy protection, remember not our sins, heal us with thy mercy. We are weak, thou art mighty; we are poor, thou art rich; we are sick, thou art the physician; we are needy, thou art the most generous. O God, endow us with thy providence, thou art the powerful, thou art the giver, thou art the beneficent. Thank you.
What a great country we live in, let's celebrate it together, join me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. And we are all here this week, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Camachero?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Good evening.
Councilmember Ron?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here. We have a great presentation to make this evening, and I became aware of this through a mutual friend at Rose Again Foundation. So tonight, we are recognizing Brady Johnson and Brianna Reed for their efforts to raise donations for Rose Again Foundation. So if I could have them come up, Rhonda, you want to come up with them and tell us a little bit about what it is that they've done?
Good evening, Mayor Edwards.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. I am thrilled to be here this evening because we have some really special citizens of Temecula that have been serving foster children in Temecula for over a year now. They have both done fundraisers, and they have both continued fundraisers after their first time. They have donated, I have with me Brady Johnson here, you can almost see him, he is now seven, he was six when he started making his own cards, selling his own cards, and he showed up at our annual meeting and gave us $500. Then for Valentine's Day, he decided to make more cards, and he sold those, and he gave us another 300. So this six-year-old, now seven-year-old, has really shown others how you can put a little effort and raise some funds and make a difference in children in your community. He doesn't say a lot, as you can see. He is on a video that we have on our Facebook page, and Brady, I'm going to bring this mic down so you can tell the kids what you said everyone should do when it comes to helping their community.
Just do it.
It sounds like that's exactly what you did.
Madam, may I ask Brady a question?
Of course.
Where can we buy your cards?
On my Etsy account.
Yeah, 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 here they are.
On my Etsy account.
Oh, on his Etsy account?
Excellent.
Oh, yeah, look.
That information is on our Facebook page as well, and you certainly can email us if you need additional information.
These are great, so Fourth of July is coming, so.
Mm-hmm. He has patriotic cards, he has just absolutely a variety of cards. His price is fabulous, and it's original work, and we're just very, very proud of him.
So you paint each, each one is an original, so these are not Xerox copies or photocopies of a card, they're all original cards. You paint every one of them?
Yes.
It takes a lot of time, huh?
Yes.
And, and so who cleans up, who cleans up the paint when you're done? Come on, you can tell us the truth. Do you clean up the paint and stuff when you're done?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you can come home with me anytime then, can you cook too? These are tremendous, so we need to go to your Etsy account, right? And would that be Brady Johnson? Is that how we find it?
It's Brady's Cards for Kids.
Brady's Cards for Kids, that is excellent, so, you know, as fundraisers, and we've done a lot of fundraising over the last 25 years or so, sometimes we think it has to be really complicated, but I think it takes an entrepreneurial spirit of a six-year-old to show us that it doesn't have to be complicated, and these are just fabulous, so I'm going to go visit your Etsy account. And so we have certificates for you, Brady, and for Brianna.
Brianna?
Yep.
Brianna is a Girl Scout, and she came to us and wanted to put together a 2K walk-run as a fundraiser, so she gathered her Girl Scout troop with her, and they did that, I showed up, and there were balloons, there were bananas and juice and all kinds of things, and it was, it's just a fabulous setup, and then she donated that money to us. She has since, they follow us, and when we put out that we have a need, very often, she and her mom show up at the door, and they hand us things that we have said we have a need for. Most recently was Mother's Day, we think it's very important to recognize foster moms and foster dads on Mother's Day and Father's Day. And so the kids, we have a write-in contest where the foster kids write in and tell us why their foster mom or foster dad is so special, and then we give gift baskets, and we include the letters that the children wrote to them, and it's a very wonderful experience, and it really touches the hearts of the foster moms and foster dads. And we were a little bit short because we had a lot of great foster moms this year, and she showed up at the door with baskets full of all kinds of things, and in addition to that, some handmade cards that she made as well. So it just seems like when we have a need, she and her mom, Anna-Lisa, I'm sorry, she's filming, I guess, her mom and dad are here, but her mom supports her, and they show up at the door and bring things to us, and we're so appreciative, it's hundreds of dollars, if not up to $1,000 with everything they have done for us just in the past year.
So again, Rose Again Foundation supports our foster youth and kind of fills the holes, whatever they need, because their foster parents can't always provide them everything they need, so God bless the foster families and Rose Again Foundation for doing those special things like summer camp and some of the things that the foster youth really wouldn't get to do otherwise.
Fine.
And because you have support from great kids and young adults like this, and it really, you know, you make it seem simple, and giving from the heart really should be simple.
We've been amazed with the young children, we have Cole Schumacher, who made leather bracelets with his dad, and they have John 14:18 on it, which is, "I will not leave you an orphan, I will come to you," and they sold them as a fundraiser. They could not be here, but I did want to mention, that's another young man from Temecula who was fundraising and donated the money to us, and we have four other young men who actually live in Murrieta, and they raised money through a lemonade stand that just kept growing and growing, and so we just feel incredibly blessed that we have children helping children in the community, and the services we give do make a difference, they help those kids to make friends and to heal and to be able to move forward, and so we're very pleased to serve them, but we're excited to have the help that we have from the community.
We wanted you to come tonight so that you could be, you know, an example for others who may be watching or for anyone who's here in attendance tonight, that they can go home and talk to their children or grandchildren or their neighbor kids and say, you know, look what Brianna and Brady did, it's just amazing, and so I have, we have Mayor Potem Matt Ron, and I wanted to see him standing next to Brady, go, don't go, come back.
I have Suzanne as a board member, and she's here this evening as well, we have three board members out of the city tonight, so I'm glad that she was able to make it with us.
So we have these certificates for you, and it's just our way of thanking you for your generosity and for your entrepreneurship and for donating to other children who need a little helping hand every once in a while, we're very, very proud of you. Yeah, so turn around, you can get pictures, turn around, Mayor Potem. That's great, thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you very much.
Six years old, amazing. So do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor, we have two public comments under non-agendized items.
All right, so a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. So could we have the first speaker, please?
The first speaker is Richard Dirking, to be followed by Gloria Whittington.
Very cute. Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Don't be nervous.
Hello, Stu.
How are you?
I've known Stu for about 30 years.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, cutting my hair used to be a lot more of an extensive project.
He told us he was only 31-years-old.
He looks it. My name is Richard Dirking, I live at 42889 Via Alhama, Temecula. I attended the most recent Planning Commission meeting on June 21st because I was interested in learning more about the Generations Project at Lynnfield, hopefully you all are aware of that one. My house is located just south of Pabba Road, so I live in the vicinity, and I received a notice of the public hearing for that, for that project. There were several things I heard during the meeting that I was concerned or skeptical of, and so I'm requesting some written documentation to confirm or clarify these things, and I've given you all copies of those things, no reason going over all of them. For example, one of the commissioners during the meeting said that Lynnfield property was private property and that the owners of private property could do what they want. I don't think that's true. I respect that owners of private property have rights, but I do not think that people can do everything they want, and when it can adversely affect their neighbors, and specifically my enjoyment of my property. I've lived in my house by Lynnfield for about 19 years now. Another thing that was mentioned by the Generations owner, at least I think it was the owner, and I apologize, I didn't get his name, was that he was offended that opponents of the project were saying it was about money. I think that's actually kind of funny, I'm sorry. Maybe he meant not all about money. Anyway, I believe that the proposed four-story building, it's a four-story building over there, is not that big and tall to facilitate the emergency access by fire personnel or to enhance the experience of the residents. They're not building it like, well, let's build them a high-rise so they can look over Temecula, or is it a four-story building to give something good for the neighbors to look at, okay? It's not supposed to be all about money. Anyway, I've prepared a list of some of the things that was said at this meeting, and I'm requesting that City staff contact me directly and respond to each of those items. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
If you have a list, you may give it to the City Clerk.
I got it.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Gloria Whittington, I live here in Temecula on Cali Pina Colada. Some of you are aware, many of you may not be aware, we have a major traffic issue on the street that we're working, trying to work through with the city, with the Traffic Commission, in reducing the volume of traffic. Normally on a street, residential street, would be about 2,000 cars a day. Well, the most recent traffic survey that we've done has over 4,000 cars a day on our street, so we're trying to work out through the Traffic Commission various traffic calming measures to reduce that. In the meantime, I was told that I needed to approach the City Council and request the approval to initiate a new agenda item completely off of the traffic calming, to start a study on opening a closed street. This street is a main artery, or could be a main artery, to relieve a lot of that street traffic off of our street throughout the Meadowview community. We've been told it won't be opened, or we can't close our street, which it really isn't an issue, but we're concerned that we're being told the street will not be opened. We'd like to initiate a request, somehow get it on the agenda so we can have the city perform a study and relieve us of that traffic, pushing some of that duly deserved traffic into that other neighborhood that is currently closed. We have a lot of children that live on our street, we've been, I've been attending meetings since October, requesting this traffic calming survey to go in, we're looking at restricting right-turn lanes, left-turn, somebody brought up bringing it into a one-way street, this is the only residential street in the city that we have this similar problem. It's become a shortcut, it's off of La Serena, westbound going into the mall, to Winchester, into the western part of the city past Meadowview. We just have too much traffic, and something needs to be done. There's a couple of schools in the area, and a lot of that is school traffic, they've done a number of surveys. From October of last year, it was 3,500 cars a day, in May, it was over 4,000 cars a day, and it just keeps escalating. So I ask the Council to please consider putting on an agenda that the Traffic and Safety Commission initiate a study of opening up Cueva as part of our relief program for our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have no further speakers. All right, so we can move on to City Council reports, and... Stu, your name was there, you are.
There.
Okay, it was there and then it disappeared, so go ahead.
Uh-huh. Okay, well, two weeks ago, I wasn't here, I was in Cuba on a mission trip, and all's I can say about that is God bless America.
[laughing].
And then, as soon as I got back, I went to the Business Incubator, which we have a group of high school students, about 30, maybe 35, who are learning how to start their own business, and tomorrow, I believe, is the fast pitch, so basically, they formed up into little groups to create a business, a business model, and then they're going to pitch it to basically a Shark Tank-type of a committee, and so, which, again, I think this is the kind of thing that a lot of people out there don't realize the city has going on, is not only are we developing, using this facility to develop businesses, but we're actually looking to that next generation, allowing them to create businesses themselves, come up with ideas, and see how difficult or it will be to start your own business. So it's been very fun to be a part of that, and I just really did a drop-in, and I was just like amazed at these kids and how enthusiastic they were, so that was, that was very cool.
Well, we're glad to have you back.
Yeah, I'm glad to be here.
And we missed you.
Yeah.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, so if nobody else has a comment, I've got two things really quickly. We were honored to receive notice from the State of California, California League of Cities, that the City of Temecula has received a Helen Putnam Award, which is the highest award you can receive for a project or a program, and I'm going to let Kevin, would you like to elaborate on that just a little bit? You can brag a little bit?
Were you going to talk about it?
No.
Oh, uh, well, thanks, kind of caught me off-guard.
Oh, never.
Yeah, yeah, the Helen Putnam Award is definitely a prestigious award offered by the League of Cities, and the topic was economic development through the arts, and so in a short way or brief way, it shows that the City of Temecula is on the forefront of our cultural arts and what we're doing, and there's a nexus between what we do in terms of cultural arts and economic development. In our application, which was about six pages, we competed with a lot of agencies, but what stood out was our connection and our collaboration with our stakeholders and with the community. We've worked with True Acts, for example, and I have to acknowledge them for their efforts, but from our MERC to our static art, to what we do with some of our galleries, to our performances, it was taken into consideration and acknowledged and rewarded, and so staff is to be commended, but also the Council for your support, as well as the community, as well as our commission. So we'll talk about it a little bit more, I'll have a presentation, but again, it's a very prestigious honor, and we're very proud of staff, so thank you.
Well, congratulations, and particularly, I think BIA, BIA had a lot to do with that program and expanding that program, so as time goes on, Kevin will be doing a presentation, and then Mayor Potem, Ron and I will be attending California League of Cities in the fall, and we have the honor of accepting that award on behalf of the City of Temecula. And Mr. City Manager, the last time we received a Putnam Award, and we apply for them regularly, was?
Yeah, we apply annually multiple times, and so it's not for lack of trying, but this is a very prestigious honor, just to put it in context, we've been fortunate as a city, I believe we've been awarded three of these awards, this will make four, but it's been 15 years, so I think the last one, I looked in the cabinet, was 2002, so congrats to TCSD and all their work in drafting a fantastic application.
It's well-deserved, and we are very proud of the efforts of staff, TCSD, so thank you on behalf of the City Council. And then the second thing is, we've all been following the tragedy of June 17th, where the USS Fitzgerald collided with a tanker off the coast of Japan, and we've learned that one of our hometown boys was involved and was killed in that crash, so we will be closing and adjourning our meeting tonight in the name of Carlos Victor Gonzan Sibian, who went to Chaparral High School, very sad, but 23-years-old, serving his country. You know, we don't think of tragedies like this as being part of the risks that our soldiers take, but it really just brings home the fact that they are serving their country every minute of every day, that they're in the military, and so our hearts will go out to his family and his friends, and we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in his name. Okay, we can move on to the consent calendar now. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of June 13th, 2017. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Hindler Leider Delamas and Associates for Sales Tax Consulting and Recovery Fee Services. Number five, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with HDL Corin and Coen, Inc. for Property Tax Consulting Services. Number six, approve a three-year agreement for consultant services with Buxton Company, DBA Buxton, for retail recruitment support and assistance, visitor insights data, and scout solution access. Number seven, approve an agreement for consultant services with Eskil Corporation for Plan Review Services for Fiscal Year 2017-18. Number eight, approve an exclusive negotiating agreement, ENA, between the city and Stephen A. Biery Company, Inc., for the potential purchase of the city-owned Diaz Road property, APN 909-370-049 and 909-370-050, subject to property. Number nine, approve a three-year agreement for consultant services with Leyton Consulting, Inc., for Geotechnical Engineering Services, Plan Review. Number 10, approve a reimbursement agreement with Hope Lutheran Church of Temecula for Undergrounding Utilities along Vallejo Avenue. Number 11, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with KRW and Associates for Engineering Plan Check, Map and Legal Description Review for Fiscal Year 2017-18. Number 12, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with CASC Engineering and Consulting, Inc., for Environmental Compliance Services. Number 13, approve the Fourth Amendment to the Contract with Pacific Striping, Inc., for Citywide Repainting of Traffic Striping, PW 13-04. Number 14, approve the amendments to the Annual Agreements for Various On-Call Traffic Engineering Related Services for Fiscal Year 2017-18. Number 15, summarily vacate restricted access along a portion of Dinty Parkway at Lot Number One of Track Map 35181. So I can take an approval, point of order, Peters, can I vote on the minutes even though I wasn't here?
No, usually you should abstain on that, but you can just note your abstention, it'll go in the minutes, you don't have to take it off the calendar.
All right, so noted, I need a motion in a second.
Remove approval of consent.
Second.
Okay. Number two, approve the action minutes of June thirteenth, 2017. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve the first amendment to the agreement for consultant services with Hindler Leider, Delamas, and Associates for sales tax consulting and recovery fee services. Number five, approve the first amendment to the agreement for consultant services with HDL Corin and Coen, Inc. for property tax consulting services. Number six, approve a three-year agreement for consultant services with Buxton Company, DBA Buxton, for retail recruitment support and assistance, visitor insights data, and scout solution access. Number seven, approve an agreement for consultant services with Eskil Corporation for plan review services for fiscal year 2017-18. Number eight, approve an exclusive negotiating agreement, ENA, between the city and Stephen A. Biery Company, Inc., for the potential purchase of the city-owned Diaz Road property, APN 909-370-049 and 909-370-050, subject to property. Number nine, approve a three-year agreement for consultant services with Leyton Consulting, Inc., for geotechnical engineering services, plan review. Number ten, approve a reimbursement agreement with Hope Lutheran Church of Temecula for undergrounding utilities along Vallejo Avenue. Number eleven, approve the first amendment to the agreement for consultant services with KRW and Associates for engineering plan check, map and legal description review for fiscal year 2017-18. Number twelve, approve the first amendment to the agreement for consultant services with CASC Engineering and Consulting, Inc., for environmental compliance services. Number thirteen, approve the fourth amendment to the contract with Pacific Striping, Inc., for citywide repainting of traffic striping, PW 13-04. Number fourteen, approve the amendments to the annual agreements for various on-call traffic engineering-related services for fiscal year 2017-18. Number fifteen, summarily vacate restricted access along a portion of Dinty Parkway at lot number one of track map 35181. So I can take an approval. Point of order, Peters, can I vote on the minutes even though I wasn't here?
No, usually you should abstain on that, but you can just note your abstention. It'll go in the minutes. You don't have to take it off the calendar.
All right, so noted. I need a motion and a second.
Move approval of consent.
Second.
Okay. There you go.
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
I'll go ahead and register my abstention, as you did for June thirteenth, because I was not here either.
All right.
And I think I have to do the same.
You probably should.
Yeah. Which means, but let me put it this way. I did review the minutes and feel comfortable voting on them, so.
That's, that's fine. That's all you need to do.
Then I'll withdraw my abstention.
Yes, and thank you for being the one to stand up and carry the vote.
Yeah, that's true.
So...
I was wrong. Yeah, anyway, no, we're good.
Can I ask, it raises a question, if three of you were gone, how did we hold a meeting? We had three of us here for the meeting.
Well, was that the last meeting when I was at ICSE?
No, two weeks ago, it was Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember Nigar.
Never mind. So, yeah, so never mind. So we're okay. Yeah. So we registered two abstentions.
Right.
Nigar and Stewart, and everybody else is there. And I don't have them up on the screen, but I think we are going to be unanimous, there you go, unanimous in the approval of the consent calendar. All right, so I'm going to recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meetings of Temecula Community Services, Successor Agency to Redevelopment, and Temecula Housing Authority, and the Temecula Public Financing Authority. And take it, President Comachero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight, so we'll dispense with that. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
We do not.
Thank you. We have one item under consent calendar, item sixteen, to approve the action minutes of June thirteenth, 2017.
Since I was here, I'll move approval.
I'll make, oh, second.
Oh, you beat me, but that's okay.
That's all right.
We have a motion and a second. If you should abstain, you can abstain. And it carries five zero. Okay. What's your additional report, Mr. Huggins?
Well, Mr. President, I actually do have something. So, next Tuesday, I think there's a slide? Yeah. Join us for the ultimate summer blockbuster, the annual Fourth of July extravaganza. First, you'll laugh, marry, and cheer, sing, and maybe even shed a prideful tear in honor of our Independence Day celebration at the Fourth of July Parade, featuring this year's community pride theme. As always, the parade starts promptly at 10:00 a.m. here in Old Town, and then from 2:00 to 9:30 p.m., enjoy family fun and fireworks at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. Remember, the fireworks show is at 9:00 p.m., and it will be spectacular. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Aaron, anything further?
Nothing further tonight.
Do we have any directors' reports? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Any objection?
Nope.
Or adjourn.
Okay, so, we are moving on to the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency meeting, and we've called to order, let the record reflect that all directors are here. Do we have any sort of public comments? We do not. So, moving on down to the consent calendar, all matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number seventeen, approve the action minutes of June thirteenth.
Some of.
And that will be with the two abstentions.
Okay, so noted with the two abstentions. There you go. And I bet it's going to be three to two abstained. So, Mr. Stewart abstained, and it's four to one. Anything, Executive Director?
Nothing tonight.
Or directors, any reports? Nothing. In that case, I will adjourn to the next meeting, which is Tuesday, July eleventh, at 5:30 p.m. Can I have a motion? Any, any objections?
Move adjournment.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we are going to open with a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues. You or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. It's item number eighteen, conduct public hearing number three regarding the transition from at-large to by-district elections. So could we have staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Over the last several years, cities and school districts throughout the state of California have been changing from at-large to by-district elections. On April 25th, 2017, the city council authorized the transition of the city's election system from at-large to by-district. As previously indicated, two public hearings are required prior to the maps being drawn, and two public hearings are required after the maps and sequencing is published. On May 9th and May 23rd, the city council conducted the first two public hearings and adopted the resolutions of intent and criteria. After the second hearing, draft maps were drawn and published pursuant to law, and we are here today to conduct the third public hearing and review the draft maps. At this time, I would like to introduce our demographer, Doug Johnson of National Demographics Corporation. Doug will provide us with an overview of the draft maps. After Doug's presentation, it is recommended that the city council conduct the third public hearing to go ahead and receive public comments regarding the transition from at-large to by-district elections, and there are no other action items for tonight on this item. Doug, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you. And while this is my first experience here, I do want to say it's been a pleasure to work with all of your city staff on the process so far. And so far, it's been going very smoothly, so hopefully that will continue. Let me go through this presentation. The city clerk just covered the timeline. In terms of how these maps were, were drawn, there are some fairly standard criteria that the city is following, as most jurisdictions do. And really, I grouped these in two groups. One is federal laws, which are requirements. We must have an equal number of people in each district. We must make sure we don't violate the Federal Voting Rights Act by dividing up any, with the local protected class neighborhoods. And we must avoid racial gerrymandering. We can't draw where race is a predominant factor. And so all the maps that we're looking at tonight comply with all three of those. It is worth noting as well, in terms of the Federal Voting Rights Act, that there is no majority Latino district possible here. You don't have a large enough and geographically compact enough Latino population. So often, we're talking about which ones the Latino majority seat or the Asian majority seat. There isn't anyone here. The city's demographics don't support that. So where the choices come down is deciding which map best balances what we call the traditional criteria. So the question before you and the public is to look at these criteria and choose which one best does it. No map perfectly matches all of these goals because of the equal population and other requirements. So we're looking at communities of interest. We're looking at trying to keep the districts compact and contiguous and following major roads. Those three are really so that the districts are easy for the voters to understand. When they want to get, get involved in an election and knock on doors, we want it to be easy for them to know which doors to knock on. Then we want to try to avoid, essentially, we want to leave the reelection decisions up to the voters. Avoid pairing current council members, because that tells the voters, you may have elected these two before. Now you can only have one. So to the degree we can avoid pairing current incumbents, that leaves the, the choice in the hands of the voters. And then planned future growth is a criterion you can consider. Because the lines have to be updated after the 2020 census, these lines will only be in place for one election per district. So planned future growth isn't a big deal now. It's not really something we'll look at. In 2021, when you update the lines, you want to look at this because those lines will be in place for ten years. So, jumping in, I've got three maps to show you. The orange map, you can see it has separation in the north. You have a northwestern and a northeastern district. You can see District Three, kind of a nice compact District Three in the middle on the eastern side. And it has a southern District One going across the southern part of the city. What we're trying to do in all these maps is, is follow HOA boundaries and the other potential community boundaries. Obviously, we can't do that everywhere. And one of the big challenges for me technically is that the Homer Association boundaries don't follow census block boundaries, and I have to use the census blocks. So for example, up north, you can see in the Winchester Creek, Campos Verdes HOA, it's almost all together, but there's a little notch where District Four gets a small piece. That's because District Four is following the census block line, and we have to follow that because that's where our population numbers come from. So we're trying to keep them together as much as possible. Obviously, you'll notice in all the maps, a certain trend, the, I'm going to mispronounce this, but Temecu Hills and Charning Hills HOA.
That's right.
Oh, good, okay. That, some of them are so large, and if they're in the middle of the city, that tends to lead to, there's no way to balance populations without some division. So we try to have a nice, clean division. That will be easy for the voters to understand. And being divided is not necessarily a bad thing, especially for a large jurisdiction. We get this a lot with school districts. They actually want the school attendance zones to be divided so that each school has at least two trustees answering to the, the families that go there. So essentially, if you look at here, if that HOA would have two council members, they're campaigning every election season, and that would be responsive to them. So certainly not the end of the world if a HOA does end up divided. And then posted online and with all these is the proposed election years, you can see at the bottom. The proposal would be for one, three, and five, the odd-numbered districts to be up in 2018, and two and four to be up in 2020. Because these maps do leave the voting power in the, in the hands of the voters, each district simply lines up with the council member's election cycle who's in that district. The second map also has a northwest and northeast district. You can see somewhat different boundaries. District Four moves up to, to the highway, Highway 79 up there, and follows the borders a little bit better. In the north, that does lead to a different division down in, between two and three in Paloma, Paseo del Sol. And Rancho Highlands does change in this map from District Two to District Five in order to make those changes up north. So this is the challenge of, up north, you can see there are little odder-looking districts with five kind of wrapping around four, but that's because we're trying to follow those HOAs, which don't necessarily follow square lines themselves. Then the third map is a significantly different approach, the purple map. It really consolidates the western side of the city in District Two, and then stack, what I refer to as stacks, sometimes in the literature, they call it pancakes. The other four districts on the eastern side kind of gives more of, more compact districts in this way. But then you also end up with this very large, in terms of space, District Two, as it picks up really all the less dense populated areas. All, all the districts in all these maps, of course, have an equal total number of people. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. These maps are on the website that the city has put up, and, and people are welcome to peruse them and comment at any time.
All right, thank you. So are there any questions? Jeff?
Not so much a question, but a request that I think to the city clerk would be more appropriate. In looking at these maps, I find it that, because of their size and level of detail, very difficult to, to really pinpoint neighborhood boundaries and, and the like. So before this comes back to us for consideration, can we each get a nice big map with as many streets as can be annotated on there so we, you know, really can drill down into it? Appreciate it.
Sure. We can also, I can send the city clerk a link to. In addition to doing that, we can also put it on a, kind of like a Google Maps-type interface, so people that want, they're comfortable with that, can zoom in and they can actually see individual houses and buildings, too.
That's a great idea.
So we'll, we'll get a link over to the city clerk for that and get large maps printed as well.
Any other questions? No? Okay, in that case, I will open the public hearing, and we will entertain comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have three public speakers, and I do want to note for the record that we received two public comments that were written in email as well, and those will be made a part of the record as well.
All right, thank you.
And the first speaker is Ira Robinson, to be followed by Martha Howard.
Good evening, Mr. Robinson. How are you?
Good evening, I'm back again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before I make the only three comments that I have tonight, I would like to ask to be sure that we get to see the revised maps with the kind of detail that Councilman Comachero has requested. That'd be tremendously helpful to be some of, to be able to see some of those streets. I've got three comments tonight. The first one is, before the next round of maps is done, and it sounds like there will be a next round, I still think that the city ought to proactively seek citizen involvement in the map drawing process itself. The, the difficulty of having received a map that you had nothing to say about makes it very difficult for you to understand what your options might have been, had you had an opportunity to sit down with the demographer and go through more exercises than the, the many he went through to arrive at these three. So I'm still pushing hard to see if we could have citizen involvement, even if that citizen involvement pushed the schedule a little bit, but not a lot. That's point one. Point two, and, and this has been already taken care of, the demographer has, has acknowledged that the next census, the 2020 census, is the census on which new maps will be drawn. I think that the criteria that have been adopted by the city ought to include the provision that expressly provides that district boundary maps will be redrawn each decennial census, beginning with 2020. Just include it in the, in the criteria. And it's already been granted to us, so it's not a problem. Third, with the three maps that we did get an opportunity to look at, they raise some very interesting questions and possibilities. And this is an individual's view. My view is that of the maps that we've seen so far, the yellow map looks best. But I'd love to see some more options. I'd love to see some citizen involvement, so we can get to see more of what the options are and more of what viability might look like. Thank you very much.
So, point of clarification, these maps will be available online on the city website?
These maps are already online, and they have been. They were also published in the newspaper as well, and they're available upon request as well.
Okay, and, and we can receive feedback in the form of council member emails, correct?
Correct. And, and that is why we are required to have two public hearings prior to the maps being drawn, which we held, and then two after. So that's what we're in the process of now.
So, Mr. Robinson, I understand your request, and I just wanted to make sure that as of right now, everything is online and available. And so we would encourage the public to review the maps and make comments to us via, via email would be fine, or, you know, they can call the city, and we'll return calls if there are any concerns. So, okay, thank you. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and supporting staff, my name is Martha. I live in Temecula. I'm with the Latina Association of Riverside County, and I'm here to ask a couple of questions and also requests from the city council, just as Ira, that you will appoint a special commission. I think it will be very beneficial. We want to thank you for your presentation, sir. But however, we will need those maps, especially that demonstrate the lines by cities. It's very hard to see if the lines are there, but there's no cities. We don't know exactly the boundaries, where are they exactly within the city. And so I have a question. What is the reason that this body of government have for not having a, nominate a commission council for this?
We, we aren't allowed to respond to you right now while you're there, but go ahead and finish your comments, and then I'll have the city attorney.
Well, that's, that's part of my comment. I'm here to ask this body.
Yeah, but we will address, we'll address that after, as soon as you're finished.
All right, I'm, I'm basically done. And well, one, one more thing. I do believe that diverse communities do thrive. And even though our populations, we are a unique city. We have a very mixed neighborhoods. It's wonderful. There's no concentration of anything, and we want to make it thrive even better. And so that's the reason why we are here, to ask this body to please nominate a special commission for such an event that is going to take place. And, yeah, my question was that, what was, what was the time constraint, why we didn't have a commission?
And so are you finished with your comments?
I'm finished.
Okay, then you want to go sit down, and then I'll have the city attorney or the city manager address that.
All right, thank you.
Yep, that would be you, Peter. Or Randy can do it, too, as a city clerk.
Well, did you want to go ahead and have the city attorney, or did, we have another speaker, David?
For the other speaker.
Yeah, one more speaker? Okay, so let's call the next speaker up and then we'll...
Last speaker is David Maddox.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maddox, how are you?
Good, good. Good evening, Mayor Edwards, council members, everyone. My name is David Maddox, and I'd like to begin my comments first by acknowledging some of the frustration that was expressed at the previous public hearings. Respectfully, I believe that some of that frustration was misdirected, but I do sympathize with it all the same. Temecula's been a profoundly successful city over its twenty-seven-odd years, and that's no accident. We've navigated through many challenges and changes. We've navigated through many challenges and changes as a community, under the careful stewardship of the city council and all those who served before you. So it's disconcerting when outside forces who don't know our city presume to know what's best for us. We don't have an especially diverse city, but it's well-integrated, and we certainly have a winning formula when it comes to electing good leaders. So it's frustrating that we have to change it. But Sacramento hasn't left us with much of a choice here. Bi-district elections are the only legal safe harbor, and it's actually thanks to Temecula's own Randy Joel Olson and the Western League of Cities that we even have this option available to us. They renegotiated a couple of assembly bills last year. Prior to that, Chinkman's Law Firm was hitting up cities for millions of dollars, and there was no recourse. Now, at least, there is a way forward without litigation. With that said, I'm going to use my remaining time, some of it, to address the draft maps. I'd like to ask you to move forward with the purple map for a few reasons. First, I think I understand the logic behind connecting homes based on when they were built. This is presumably why the orange and yellow map have that oddly-shaped district two, which connects Starlight Ridge all the way to Vale Ranch. However, for me, my sense of community relies more on spatial proximity. So when I think of who I want to share a district with, it's neighbors in my HOA, families who I see at my neighborhood parks, parents whose children attend the same schools as mine. And to that last point, the purple map most closely resembles the TVUSD trustee area map used in the school board elections. Also, the purple map features the shortest shared boundary between the northeast and northwest regions of the city. In other words, the district containing Roar Paw Ranch and the district containing Uptown Temecula. This is where most of Temecula's population growth is going to happen in the next couple of decades. So it's important that the other three districts have ways to expand into these areas that maintain their contiguity, I guess, or contiguousness, and also their compactness. So I think there's an argument to be made there, based on graph theory, that the purple map is the most flexible in that regard. There are several smaller improvements, which I think could be made to the purple map. I think the more detailed maps that you've requested will help us hash that out, but for now, I just want to argue, I think the purple map represents a stronger starting point than either orange or yellow. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have no further comments? Anything? No? No? All right, then we can close the public hearing, and we're open for discussion, council members? Any comments?
Go to Peter.
Peter, do you have something?
Did you want to address? Oh, okay. With respect to the question about appointing a commission, you know, that's a terrific idea, but under state law, we only have until the first meeting in August, or the, actually, the last meeting in July to approve these. The city was put into a very narrow box to approve districts once we received the letter objecting to the at-large voting. And I will leave it to City Clerk Randy Joel to talk about the process she went through last year to get us 90 days to complete that. That was a major effort on the part of Randy and her city clerks group and the league. So, yes, it would be nice, but there's no time to do it without subjecting us to a lawsuit in which we'd lose control over, over the process. I think what the city has tried to do is to make as many of these maps as available to as broad a group as possible. I think the interactive maps that Mr. Johnson is going to provide for the city will answer a lot of questions, because you literally can zero in on the specific street where the boundary is and know exactly which homes are in and which are not in. And then also, too, I think City Clerk Joel has been, done extraordinary work in reaching out to people and talking to people and accepting comments and making sure that people are comfortable in making comments, too, or so that, that's really helpful in the, under the legislative scheme.
Okay, thank you. I will add that I have seen discussions of this on different social media sites, and so we know that there are some people that are talking about it, and I know that we post regularly on the city's Facebook page and places like that. And so if we continually make people aware that the maps are available online for viewing and that we're open to comments, unfortunately, there just wasn't time to do a commission, because we're within the constraints of having, you know, to have X number of public hearings and council meetings in order to move this process forward for approval. So thank you for that explanation, Peter. Council members? Stu, you're in the queue.
Yeah, just to address Ira and, I can't remember her name.
Martha?
Martha.
Yeah, we do have, we only have two election cycles that's going to be under this, this
current map, and that's going to then give us an opportunity, I mean, as soon as we approve the maps moving forward, then we can do a commission based on the 2020 census. You know, I think going forward, we'll, we'll have that opportunity to create the commission and take our time and do it the way we want to do it. But right now, like the mayor was saying, that we were just under such a short timeline that there was really no, no opportunity to do anything about it, so. But I, I have a really good feeling we'll, we'll do the commission route once the 2020 consensus comes out, so.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. We're just taking comments today, we're not taking any action, correct? Just a couple of things of clarity, particularly for Mr., for Ira. I don't, there's not going to be any more maps drawn, so what we're looking at is what we're going to choose from. Is that a, is that a correct statement? Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that. And they're certainly not perfect, and so I appreciate you, you bringing that up. I mean, I could find pluses and minuses in all of them, and that also goes to the gentleman speaker who, who brought up a couple of good comments, which duly noted, and I really appreciate, this is really almost the first meeting where we've gotten comments on maps, on maps themselves, as opposed to just being an opposition of doing this period. And I do want to agree with the speaker, it is disconcerting. You know, it's, it's difficult to engage in something that, at least I'll speak for myself, I don't necessarily think is a good thing for the city, but, you know, we'll deal with it, and, and we'll barrel through it and go ahead and comply with the act. So that's just my comments.
Matt?
You know, it's, it's interesting, because we've been put in this position more than once by Sacramento, right? Where we're being handed a mandate and, and a somewhat unreasonable timeline and expectations of delivery on a decision without really being able to, as far as I was concerned in some of these issues, really vet a process and do things the way we normally do them in Temecula. And so it's unfortunate that we've been put into this position. That said, though, I'm wondering if there's maybe a bit of a hybrid, and I know if these are the final maps being, being drawn and so forth, you know, there still may be some questions and maybe some legitimate concerns by Ira and others. And so part of me wonders whether or not we might be able to make, you know, staff and consultants available to folks, I mean, you know, not, not necessarily a formal workshop or anything, but for those that have some concerns or questions, to be able to access them, maybe at the civic center across the way for, you know, a period of time, just to be able to understand, because we've had, we've had the advantage, we've, we've met, we've talked, we've seen the maps, we've, you know, addressed this process, and so I think we understand some of the nuances on, on map development and the sort of decision matrix, if you will, that, that goes into this process. But, you know, it's, staff reports are a little bit complex, and, and, you know, maybe it's, you know, an opportunity to shed a little bit more light, at least from the community. In absence of being able to do a full-blown commission, perhaps the, the minimum we could do is just make our, our resources available for questions. And I, I know that doesn't necessarily satisfy your issue, but it at least gets us closer to the, the mark, given the, you know, unfortunate constraints that have been placed upon the city.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Matt, to further expand on, on your point, once again, we've been handed a difficult hand by the folks in Sacramento. There seems to be, and I think it's existed for some time now, a general feeling amongst our legislators in Sacramento that, that we as local elected officials don't really know what we're doing, and therefore they have to pick up the mantle and they have to impose upon us what they think is best for our citizens. We've strongly objected to that in the past. Sadly, I'm sure we'll have to strongly object to that again in the future, but we sure could use some help. So anytime anybody gets the opportunity, if you talk to your state legislatures, legislators or have cause to interact with them, if you believe it, as the gentleman said, thank you for your comments, let them know that we kind of do know what we're doing over here, and I think we're all very proud of the city that Temecula has become. We'd like to keep it that way. I'll get off my soapbox.
Okay, thank, Mike, Mike, you want to come back?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. We're going to have one more public meeting, correct, for comments on the maps, and then at that meeting, is that the meeting we're adopting a map, or is there a subsequent meeting where we'll adopt a map?
No, we're, we're actually, the fourth public hearing is scheduled for the same night as the initial reading of the ordinance, which will happen later on during the, the meeting. And, and just so you know, Councilmember Ron, Ira and I have been speaking back and forth since the beginning of this process, so whether it's Mr. Robinson or any member of the community, the contact information for staff is absolutely available, and we urge them to, if they have any comments whatsoever, to please contact us so that we can convey those comments to the demographer, we can work with our city attorney to go ahead and get as much public input as we can in this limited framework and time.
So, if I may finish, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
The council's already voted to, to do this, so we're going to districts. That's a done deal. It's a matter of choosing the best map. I would just ask everybody who spoke and any citizen who's listening is, personally, and I'm sure my colleagues share the same sentiment, because I need feedback on the maps. I mean, I, I mean, we need, I mean, we're down to the last meeting. What I'm hoping to get is, you know, this one works for this reason, that reason, that reason, this one doesn't work, this one's good, this one's bad for this reason, that reason. I like what the gentleman speaker in the back, you know, he brought up, he gave some good ideas. I hope you come back with some more cogent regions, reasons, but really, for the next public hearing, we need actual feedback.
Yeah, I agree. Jeff?
I just can, I want to make sure that we're very clear and the public is very clear on the process from this point. As I understand it, the maps, the three maps that we're looking at are set in stone and will not change. Is that correct?
They are proposed draft maps for public comment. We are required to go ahead and have the two public hearings and then receive those public comments. If there, if the council would like to adjust any of the boundary lines accordingly based on the comments, we will then have to go back and go ahead and, and make those adjustments. We will have to republish the maps if we do such, which will then throw us out of the 90-day timeframe.
Okay, but we're talking about the comments we've heard tonight, or comments that are to us?
The comments that we've, yeah, the comments, any comments that we are receiving, whether they be written or verbal, we are, to the extent possible, incorporating them in the existing map structure.
Okay, and then when we come back for the final public hearing and to approve one of the maps, at that point, are we being asked to approve one of the three maps as is, no changes?
Yes.
And so the input that we're looking for from the public, who obviously can come up here in the public hearing and say whatever you like, but the real input we're looking for is not how do we tweak this one or how we tweak that one, it's do you like this one better than this one or this one? And why? I agree with you, that's an important part of the discussion. Okay, thank you.
Matt?
You know, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with this now, because, you know, it's a public hearing, but not really, right? I mean, because what we're, what we're saying is we've, we're giving you three choices and, and pick which one you like the most out of those three choices, and, and if we fall out of compliance with, you know, maybe doing some revisions because of a flaw in the map or, or, you know, maybe the process, then we risk litigation. Am I understanding that clearly?
Well, well, not all comments are related to changing lines and things like that.
Well, I know, but I mean, but, but in essence, you know, we're calling it a public hearing on, on, you know, the maps, but in essence, it's a public hearing on three versions of a map to choose from, not, you know, being able to actually talk about how one map is, you know, has some attributes that would be appropriate for, you know, we have the three colors, yellow, purple, and orange, you know, and a hybrid of, you know, orange and yellow seems like the most appropriate solution. We can't have that discussion without falling in and out of compliance with this, you know, state-imposed timeline.
Correct. The first two public hearings for the public was, what do you want to see the map, what do you want in the maps, what do you want to see the maps look like? That's why they're held prior to drawing the maps. And then once the maps are drawn, it's what, you know, which map do you prefer?
Right, and so I guess just as a point of clarification, I just find that to be an unfortunate circumstance, right? Because now we actually have something for folks to look at, and, and I sympathize with you completely, because we're in the same boat, right? We're looking at a map, and, and I think every version of this map has its positives and its negatives. And, you know, I'll guarantee you that if we open this, you know, next public hearing and invited everybody from every neighborhood, you know, everybody's going to have a color preference, you know, based on some feature of, you know, like the gentleman said, you know, school districts or others would be, you know, neighborhoods or, or whatever. And I have my own preferences as well, and, you know, not everybody's going to have the same reasons for those preferences, you know, but it's kind of a, it's, it's an interesting dilemma for us to be in, and, you know, I just want to highlight that I am not, you know, and I don't know how we, you know, strongly worded letter, but I mean, you know, we're really limited in how we can respond to the state, saying, you know, this, this is not, you know, the, the process, and, and I want, you know, our residents in the city to know this, too, that this is not a process that we would normally undertake as, you know, a council or as staff or as consultants for the city of Temecula. This is not how we do business. This is, you know, a state-imposed, you know, format that, you know, I strongly disagree with. And, you know, I don't know how we, you know, make that point abundantly clear to our, our folks in the legislature, but, you know, I think it's, you know, we definitely need to do that as part of this process.
That conversation is already happening at the statewide level, because folks, as cities are going through this process, we initially, we, while we, the negotiated timeline was 45 days plus 90 days, it was very clear that city said 90 days was not enough time, and Doug was a part of that, too, 90 days was not going to be enough time for us to properly do outreach. So the second phase now, we are getting ready to enter into some discussions to extend that second 90-day phase into, you know, additional time so that we can properly engage our communities.
But it's not going to help us in this process.
No.
And, and I guess that's, you know, so we're, we're sort of, you know, self-inflicted wounds here, right? I mean, we're, we're having to go through this process like it or not, and, and even if the state does, you know, change it in some fashion, in, in our process currently, this does us no good. And regardless of your perspective of why you came here tonight to speak on, on, on the issue, and whether you like or dislike the idea of districts, it's, it's seemingly an unfair position to put local government in, you know, and, you know, absent asking the legislature or the governor for a moratorium on this process while we, you know, figure this out better, it's just unfortunate that, you know, and I, and I keep reading the papers, I talk to my colleagues in other cities, and everybody's muddling through this process for better or worse, and, you know, I can't more strongly object to, you know, the process that we're, you know, unfortunately undertaking, anyway.
Councilor, if I can add, you can encourage people to talk to you about this, like the people here tonight, to call the MALDEF, the Mexican-American Guild Defense and Education Fund, because they're the ones that really determine the 90 days, and we're telling all the community groups and the jurisdictions we're working with, they're the ones that really need to hear that the community wants more time, because they're the ones the legislature's listening to. We have three school districts that got the letter in April. They're, the parents are leaving school at large, and they'll come back in September to discover a bi-trustee area election, and they'll have no involvement in the process because of 90 days, so. So definitely MALDEF is the one to call to pressure.
And that, that really isn't the typical way that the city does business. You know, we do like to involve our community in, in all major decisions that we make. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Ron covered a lot of what I was going to say. I, I will add though, the action that we're taking in adopting maps is purely for voting purposes and that's, that's what that's about. I foresee that this council will probably subsequently convene and, and come up with a set of policies so that there's no lapse or overlap or underlap representation on things that are important to the entire city. I mean, there's going to be things that are important to the entire city, no matter what district they're in. And so while we're complying with the act as it relates to voting, I think we'll probably, as I said, get together, convene, come up with a set of policies so that the service to the citizens doesn't change one iota. And I, I foresee that happening later this year.
All right, so what direction do we provide, Peter? Is this just a receive and file?
This is just, it's more than a receive and file, but it's, it's just receiving the comments from the public hearing.
Okay, so do, I mean, do we need a formal vote?
You don't need to take any action.
All right, so you've heard comments, we've made note of all the public comments and we've provided direction as to where people can access the maps and, and continue to contact city council or city staff. And I know Randy has been very busy on the phone fielding calls. So thank you for everyone's participation and ask your friends and neighbors to come and participate. You have to come forward.
I apologize, Mayor, but if you'll just-
And you can fill out a request to speak later.
I will, thank you.
Okay. Cecily.
You know, it's, I, I guess I didn't feel like I had a public comment until we got a little bit more into discussion. And I, I too, like fellow councilmembers, have certain worries and concerns about what is happening as it relates to moving to districts for the reasons that have all been expressed tonight. But I guess my one caution, if we're going to be, conduct full due diligence and provide or demonstrate to our constituents that we are providing a balanced assessment of the situation and the maps, that we provide some counter discussion about how maybe this may be or could be a good thing for the city. All I've heard to date, I don't have that here, or I'm not suggesting that there necessarily is, but I think we do owe it to our residents to determine and make sure that there isn't. Maybe it's just something we haven't thought about, and I guess I'm, I have missed that in all of the presentation and discussion about it as it relates to, this is, you know, we're, we're, we're making it bad maybe because we're just, we're being forced to do it, which nobody likes to do anything under duress, but I don't know that it's fair to necessarily qualify it that or put all of that sentiment behind it as opposed to making sure that we remain objective and try to see some benefit or silver lining. So I'm not advocating, because I share many of the views and everything, but I just want to make sure we're careful not to just dismiss it or do this begrudgingly without, if we're going to have to, then let's own it and let's try and make it a positive. So I'm sorry, I'm very nervous because I know this is out of order.
That's okay. Go fill out your pink slip.
Okay.
I, I appreciate your comments and, you know, we always want to do the right thing for the city. And normally, we would have more time to think about this and, and construct and refine a process, but we were not afforded that privilege this time. So we are being forced to do things in a way that, that really isn't typical of the city. I mean, we are very good at planning and strategizing and collecting data and getting public feedback and public comments and public participation, and we really do care what our residents think. And we structure a lot of our plans based on the comments that we get from our residents, in fact, all of them. You know, we have workshops and, and, you know, study sessions and information sessions, and really, this has not afforded us the time to do that. And I think that is one thing that we're not happy about. And also, the guidelines that we must observe in selecting these districts are very strict. And just to give you an example, when I met with Randy to review the maps and I asked her about something as simple as moving one of the, one of the district boundary lines by one block to, you know, to move it down to a major thoroughfare. And, and she calculated in doing that, it would have increased the voters, voter registration in that one district by 6,000 votes, which means we would now have to readjust all the other districts in order to try and balance everything. And so it's really quite a balancing act to, to follow all the guidelines to make sure that we don't split up neighborhoods and we try and divide, you know, on thoroughfares and maintain the same population within each voting district and consider where council members live now because that's also part of the rules. So it's, it's really difficult and to do, to do this in such a short amount of time. I, you know, we've got to give Randy so much credit and staff and, and Peter and our consultants to, for being able to really protect the city because we do want to be in compliance. And that's a whole other, you know, discussion that we can have, but I think we have done the best we can as far as trying to solicit public comments under these very tight constraints. And even doing so, we had to keep moving forward all, all the while, while public is, you know, trying to, to weigh in and comment. So now we're kind of down to the wire and we're looking at three different maps. And thank you for those of you who, you know, commented on which your favorite is. And I don't, you know, none of the maps is my ideal map and I probably speak for almost everyone up here. So within the time constraints that we have, we are doing the best we can. And begrudgingly, Cecily, I will admit, and I think a lot of it has to do with the, the timeline. Temecula's more thorough than this and, and we're more careful. So within the timeline we have, staff has done a marvelous job of, of, you know, making sure that we engage the public and we still adhere to the timeline. So we have this, it doesn't need an approval, so we're going to go on, I guess, and still encourage you to weigh in by emailing us or checking out the maps online. So we can move on to city council business. Item number 19, approve an amendment to the CalPERS contract to provide for sharing employer costs by classic local miscellaneous members in the management and confidential employees group. So who's going to do this one?
That'd be me. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Hi, Isaac.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is follow-up to action taken by the city council at the May 9th meeting earlier this year. On May 9th, the city council approved and amended and restated management and compensation plan, which changed the manner in which management and confidential employees' pension contributions are reported to CalPERS. Although there were no changes to the amounts the city or the employees contribute to the pension costs, the change in reporting requires an amendment to the city's contract with CalPERS, which can only be authorized via city ordinance. This change has no fiscal impact. Therefore, our staff recommendation is for city council to adopt the resolution of intention to amend the city's PERS contract as well as the two procedural certifications PERS requires. These three items can be done with one vote and then introduce the requisite ordinance through a separate council action. That concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
So any questions? None? So this is really a housekeeping item in order to bring us into compliance. So Jeff?
Move 19.1, .3, and .4 and we can come back for the ordinance, .2.
Okay, so have a motion for 1, 3, and 4.
Second.
And I need a second, all right? And cast your votes. And that is unanimous. All right, Peter, do you need to read this?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula authorizing an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System and the city council of the city of Temecula.
All right. And need to move approval for the verbiage?
It's introduction.
It's introduction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Second. God, we are off our game tonight, huh?
We are. I think it, who seconded?
Sorry.
Thank you. Button. All right, and that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, on to departmental reports, anything?
Madam Mayor, these are just receive and file unless there's anything specific.
Okay, nothing. Commissioners, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you. Remember last council meeting, we had our youth musical theater come and perform for us. That was great. Happy to, to let everyone know, they sold out all six shows.
Yep.
As expected, that usually happens. We're starting a summer camp. It's going to be 13, the Musical, something that they're just starting out. So if your kids are interested, we encourage you to visit the city's website and sign up for that class. And I had brought this up in the past, we had worked with a, with a local music director and there's going to be a live orchestra, youth orchestra for that performance. It's the first time we've been doing that, so pretty proud of that. I hope you all come out and see it. That's all.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Tullio?
Yes, when we met last week, we had a rather, relatively full agenda and worked with it. I would guess the main one on that was the Linfield School Development. And three of our commissioners had a fairly lively discussion on that. I was not able to because proximity to the project and we had one absence. But that will be coming to you with the same limitation on Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And hopefully it'll, it'll serve the public.
Excellent. Yes, large project, so thank you.
And nothing for report, thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. City manager, anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a couple of infrastructure updates I wanted to remind the community of. Temecula Parkway Freeway Interchange Construction, again, this will last through December of 2018. The project updates are online for those that are interested in following this project and also on the hotline there on the screen. We did finish the slurry ceiling on Winchester Road from Margarita Road to Ynez and Jefferson Avenue from Cherry Street to Ranch California Road. We'll be striping these newly paved streets later this week. And slurry ceiling on Temecula Parkway from Pachanga Parkway heading east all the way out to the city limits, this will begin tomorrow evening. This road work will be done at night from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM and expected to last until mid-July. And we're also replacing the pavement along Margarita Road from Ranch California Road all the way to Temecula Parkway, but most of the heavy work associated with this project will begin after the 4th of July holiday and lasts throughout the summer. And then construction of new sidewalks is underway near the north entrance to Old Town along Old Town Front Street, and we expect that to be completed by this weekend. And on the south side of Fifth Street, a new sidewalk there will be completed in July. And there's several residential neighborhoods throughout the city that are scheduled for slurry seals this year, starting with Harveston, and that will be on July 3rd. And you may see this vehicle traveling around town. 100% of our paved roadway network in Temecula will be surveyed this year with laser and camera technology. This is actually a pretty cool vehicle. So if you see these technologically equipped trucks on our streets, they're collecting pavement data that will help prioritize our roadways for maintenance in the future and future budgets. And really, the best place to learn about what's going on in the city is our website and Facebook page. And I encourage everyone to, to stay engaged in following these projects. That concludes my report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Peter?
Mr., Madam Mayor and members of the council, we did have a closed session tonight, two items. We have no action items to report from that under the Brown Act.
All right, thank you. So, gentlemen, in the name of Carlos Victor Gonzán Sibian, hometown boy, Chapel High School graduate, who was tragically killed in the collision USS Fitzgerald and the tanker off the coast of Japan, I would like to adjourn in his name.
I'll make that motion, or if that, if that's a motion.
Yes.
May I just ask one quick question? It, it's my understanding that he is going to be honored in some fashion by the city? Is it appropriate that we can mention what that is? Mr., Mr. Thorson, it's not an agenda item, but can we mention that?
Yeah, it's just an announcement.
Okay. If you would, Aaron?
Yeah, we've not had any communication with the family, and I think that's probably the most considerate next step, but it was the opinion in support of the Military Ad-hoc Subcommittee that we approached their family and his family. And if they so desire, we have a large capital project for fallen heroes that's being planned at the Temecula Duck Pond, and it would only seem fitting that this young man who served our country and lost his life be honored in, as part of that project and the design of that project. So if it's the will of, of their family, I think we're, we're prepared to make it happen.
Very good. Thank you. And so I'll move, that we close in his honor?
I'll second that.
So motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Stand adjourned.